Welcome everyone to the March 28, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I want to extend this special welcome to our friends at Nutmeg TV. They're here to televise our first Selectmen meeting here. We also have a Zoom link for the TV as well, but this is another potential outreach if we like how it is on cable and so on to expand our presence. So I call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. If we could please stand for the political.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Citizens' Comments. A little bit different today, but just go over the basic rules. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or on Zoom there's a reaction to. At the bottom of the screen is a reaction and just raise your hand. If you wouldn't mind, limit your comments to three minutes. At the end of all the citizens' comments, the Board of Selectmen will address any citizens' comments that they are going to address. So with that, I'll open it up for citizens' comments. On Zoom, any citizens' comments? Seeing no citizens' comments, I'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three. To accept the minutes from February 28, 2023 Regular Meeting. You'll find those minutes in your folder.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, February 28.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion varies.
Do we don't have any minutes from our special what you mean?
Not yet.
So they'll come up.
They'll come up the next one. Agenda Item Number Four, Appointments to Boards and Commissions. In your folder, you'll find a vacancy list. I want to give a special attention to the Water Pollution Control Authority. We've sent some messages out. I've also spoken with the Chair and they're very eager to try and find some good candidates for that. Especially if we could find somebody from the Lake Garda area, you know, that's the major area for that agency. And so I just want to make another plug. We have had a few people reach out. We're waiting for information from those individuals and I want to work with the Chair, who I met with last Friday, to try and find some good candidates for Water Pollution Control Authority. So I just want to, again, another plug and especially to the Lake Garda residents, if you're interested. And I think we even have some over on the Collinsville side. So this might be a good outreach for Nutmeg TV as well to get that message out there. That's all the items for appointments to Boards and Commissions. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, ARPA Requests. You'll find in your folder, ARPA Requests dated 3/28/23. We have one individual ARPA request that you can see there. Their total of $2,000. And the rest are ARPA requests for departments within the town. So rather than my going through them, we have some guests here that would like to to discuss their ARPA requests. So I'll leave it. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first. No problem, mate.
And if you wouldn't mind, a little different, we've got a microphone over there for our Nutmeg audience. Please state your name and your department.
Okay, my name is Tricia Toomey. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation and Senior Center as well. So my request is for the website Community Hub, which is based off of Civic Lift, and that's the company that is through. The idea for Community Hub is that it would be a website that wouldn't only benefit Parks and Rock, but actually the community as a whole. I've been here just a little under 10 years and one of the biggest things that we always say is that there's so much going on in Burlington, yet nobody knows enough about it because we don't have like one community paper or a newsletter or anything along the lines of that. We all do our own individual things, every organization, there are so many different organizations, clubs, groups, all, everything along the lines of that. And there's so many great things going on, but we don't have one formal way to go and find everything. So Community Hub is a website that everybody can put in, like any organization, any individual can put in basically an event and give a description of it, the date, everything along the lines of that, and then it can be posted on there. So we would be, Parks and Rock would be the approval process for everything for that as what would be listed, what wouldn't be. But it would be one main source where everybody could go on there and find basically a huge town events calendar for exactly every event that was going on. It could be promotional items for businesses, clubs, everything for that. So within the request, we asked for two years of that, which one year is $3,500. We asked for two years. It's kind of like a trial basis and then we asked for $8,000 along with that for promotional items. So meaning promotional is that the biggest key to having this and it being a success is people actually using it. So we want to be able to send out a mailer a couple of times a year, probably about four times over the course of those two years, and also buy promotional items that include the website on there to get people to go to it. One of the greatest things about it is that everybody has the ability to go in and put it in themselves. So it's not something that's solely based upon one person or one department using it. It's however many people can get on there and use it and then we just approve it and it's posted. And it also will allow different phishing to go through into like a business or actually using the MyRec system on Parks and Rock, for example. And it will be able to fish our events and actually post them to the Community Hub website without us ever having to do that. So the company will set that up, that's included within their annual fees. They can do that with the town website, with our Parks and Rock website and probably a few businesses as well, whatever we want to set it up to be. So that it's a continuous basis of updating throughout.
And I'd like to add, this is a platform that Explore Farmington has used. And Rose Ponte, the Economic Development Coordinator in Farmington, we've had some meetings with her, she's gone through this. We all love this, this, this program. The Chamber of Commerce has also looked at this, they're very excited, they want to participate, they want to help with this. And we also want to utilize it as a launchpad for a newsletter. So the content comes in through here, the Chamber has expressed interest at certain businesses. You know, I had one business a couple of weeks ago and saying, there's no way to get the word out here in Burlington. So this, this website would be one way to get the web, it out. It would connect with and work with our town website, but it's a different function. It's not, it can have town events on it and that type of thing, but it's more of a user-friendly, what's happening here in Burlington. Again, Farmington calls it Explore Farmington, we could think of some catchy thing for Burlington. And from talking to Farmington, they say it's done very well, it's very successful, but it takes time to market it, get people to understand that it's there, get them to use it. So part of the ask for this ARPA request is also to do mailings and do things to continue to get the word out that we have this platform to get the word out about Burlington. Anything from hiking trails to restaurants to worship services to, you know, it's user-based. So they put the information in and the town employees would just monitor it, making sure that it's appropriate for the town.
What kind of time?
With the library being in that? Yeah, of course. It would be any town department could be, I mean, any town with department or community organization, even an individual can be put into it. Things that wouldn't be like, we haven't really decided what would be inappropriate or not appropriate, but for instance, would we necessarily market events that were solely based around alcohol? Probably not. So it's a little bit right now.
What kind of, you know, the oversight or the approval process, what kind of time commitment are you think you'll need from staff to deal with that?
That's a great question. So Ashley and I in our department are cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to handle it. Where it all depends upon how much is going to be, how much it's going to be used within that. I would say at the beginning, it's probably going to be a lot more because we're going to be going through it with a, you know, fine tooth comb and really looking at it. If there's, obviously if there's repeat people that we know are putting it in that understand what we're looking for, then I would assume the less that we would have over time. So from what we know and what we've seen so far, it should be, you know, about probably, it depends. Like we can do it, you can approve it within minutes on there as well. So it's, it just depends how many requests come in and so can we handle it or not. But we're willing to try it at least for the first two years and see what happens with it. And if maybe if future staffing needs to happen, then that obviously need to be discussed.
That's a good point, but I don't think, I think what's going to happen at the beginning, New Year's if we're going to get on, there's going to be some questions. There's going to be, there's going to be some startup for that. But once it's in place, according to Rose, there's really not a lot of maintenance with it. You know, you'll get, if there are problem posters, we'll know who they are and you basically just don't allow them to post. But I think in the beginning, there will be some startup associated with this, but on an ongoing basis, it's supposed to be relatively seamless.
How do you access this?
So we would market, like how do we access it or?
Would not, I mean, how would the general public access this? I mean, we have our town website, which this could be.
It would be linked on there, obviously, like as a sub portion of it. So we use, I think Civic Plus is that whatever, yeah, the town website is. So this company does offer a municipal site as well. But obviously if we're to say with our current one, then it would just be a click, walk up to the homepage of it.
So we would basically have two websites then for the town.
Yeah.
One for the.
One for that and then one for municipal government side, yeah.
And as I said, the Chamber is very excited about this because it's, it's more of a, you know, if you want to find out what's happening in Burlington, you don't go to the town website. You know, you go to, and I think David has it up here now, Explore Farmington. And it really has, you know, the town website has to have a lot of things on there by statute. So that, that has to make sure that we have all that stuff on there for that. And then this one is just, we could make it as user-friendly as, as we can. And, and more so dedicated to promoting, promoting Burlington. That's really what we're doing, want to promote what, what's happening in Burlington.
Litchfield, the, Litchfield Hills use it with Northwest Todd. They promote everything, the Northwest Hills on there, Litchfield uses it and that's our town website and the events as well on there. And Water uses it as well with their events.
Is there any limitation to the number of entities you can designate to automatically pull info? Like you mentioned, the Town Hall.
Yeah, I'm sure that there are limitations that won't be, yeah. I, we don't have like a set number on how many different entities we can pull from on that because it will, that's going to be a lot of behind the scenes work on that. But I'm sure there are limitations, but I just don't know what the set number would be on that.
But I mean, there's enough, you think, to include the Chamber, to include all the major organizations?
Yeah.
How long before this will be up and running?
I would say probably September for that, if we could get it, because we're about to go into our crazy busy season in Parks and Rock. So I wouldn't say before then and I'll also, we have to start it up at that point too. So if we can get it done in August, that would be great, but I would say probably promoting it, getting it up there, starting it, really having it would be first September.
So you, you potentially have it before Tavern Day, so you could have all the Tavern Day stuff on there.
I mean, potentially, yeah.
If everything went correctly.
And again, the Chamber wants to be part of this, they want to help sponsor this. I think they're, they're, they want to, they've asked, at the last few meetings, and I told Trish that she'd have to go make the next presentation at the, at the Chamber and she's, she's doing a great job. So I think this is really moving on, the Chamber's been asking about it. You know, the Chamber loved this idea when we brought it up to them a few months ago, just a matter of getting somebody to volunteer for it, right, Trish?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there like a chat part to this also, where people can respond and stuff, or this is just a posting of an event?
Just a posting of that.
So there's no, would be no sort of back and forth like on other particular website?
No.
I noticed Farmington is a sponsor for that, so maybe we could explore that. Absolutely. Especially if we get into a, you know, not only for this, but we get to newsletter or something where we get something in people's mailboxes and, and the business community, some of them I thought you have been very interested, just a small little ad response for that.
It just depends, really helping get that, market at the beginning and how many people use it.
Any other questions for Trish?
So would this be just a two-year commitment?
Um, I mean, at this, yeah, at this point, that's what we're requesting to see kind of where it goes from that.
And if it goes, then we put it into the budget, you know.
What would it be for a reoccurring fee, do you have any idea?
It's $3,500 every year.
After we get started and the $8,000 we have for this promotional stuff, every year it's a $3,500 expense. I'll make a motion to.
Want to do them all at the end, are we?
I don't know if we should do them, do, we didn't combine them the last time, did we?
I think we usually do what's on the ARPA request sheet, but.
Okay, well, however you want to do it, that's fine.
And then what, the last time, there was some information that I did not have, so we omitted one. So maybe that's the best way to do it, just keep it consistent.
Let's have it done before.
All right, who's next? All right, all right, Jody.
I'm Jolipa Page, Library Director. Today I am requesting ARPA funds for a variety of materials to enhance with the library papers as well as making our materials more accessible to the public because there's a good chance that people don't even know all the resources that we have. Some of the things that we'd like to do at the library is increase our database availability. Right now, we offer Hoopla, Overdrive just for downloadable books and audiobooks, and we have Consumer Reports and Tumble Books. I'd like to expand that because I'm seeing our numbers growing every month with how many people are using the downloadable resources. So I'd like to expand it beyond books and offer resources like Creative Book, which has crafting classes and lessons on it. We have Book Flicks, which is a children's picture book subscription online where it matches a nonfiction title with a fiction title. So while kids are reading something fiction, they can learn the actual facts of a nonfiction title that's been matched up. And also a Bendy Bookworm yoga database, which would be for children as well as adults. And it would be free yoga classes that people could take at home as well as something we could do at the library and screen a yoga class and have a program with that. I also want to increase the funding that we're putting into Overdrive materials to make more titles available to our patrons. Right now, we're currently sharing titles through the consortium. We haven't put any of our own titles in in a few years. I'd like to start being able to increase what we're actually able to offer, which gives priority to Burlington residents. We also want to increase what the children's library, the children's department has for making their programs more accessible to children with special needs. April, our children's librarian, has grown the Storytime programs immensely over the last few years and she wants to incorporate some equipment that will make it more sensory friendly, balance themes, little like leapfrog pads that the kids like stepping stones that they can touch, as well as add some of the equipment back to the playtime area such as blocks with a cabinet. And she also wants to put together some themed backpacks. So if a parent comes in and says, I need books on potty training, instead of digging through the picture books for a prolonged amount of time, we can offer them a kit that has everything they need on that topic. One of the resources that we have at the library that I don't think people are aware of is a vast collection of photographs and documents from Burlington history. And it's available to anybody that wants to come and see it, but so few people know about it that what we want to do is actually digitize our entire history room collection. We want to scan all of the photographs and archive them into albums on our website, create a YouTube channel where our local history specialist has created some like video timelines of different events of Burlington's history as well as the documents. He also is, has a lot of oversized maps and photographs of Burlington, posters, things like that that can't be scanned on a normal scanner. So we're looking to get an overhead scanner to actually be able to photograph those icons and put them into the collection. We're hoping to hire a temporary staff member to come in and actually digitize these materials and sit and scan and tag and organize all these photos and documents, which is also part of our request. So we have some scanners and materials for that. We have a few hardware stations that need updating. We need some new receipt printers and scanners for the circulation desk area. And then we just had some other basic requests, storage tubs, cricket supplies and things like that to help us with any signage or anything that we do at the library, anything creative with a cricket that we've been using for diet cups.
And I wanted to say, you know, we've discussed with Jody and first of all, Jody's been doing a great job as their new library director. She's got a great team and one of the things we talked about is that there's been a lot of capital, there's been a lot of things thrown at the library, but there's a, an underutilization. And, and as she discussed, this is a lot of her ideas and her team's ideas to help get the library better utilized. And it, there's, there's a lot in here, but I think it's very well thought out. And there are some subscriptions, but the Creative Book for 1,500 is a three-year subscription. The Book Flicks is a three years for 1,800, the Bendy Bookworm is three year for 900. Don't know if we're going to want to continue with those, but you know, it's a, it's a kind of a try, try them out. The digitizing, the Historical Society, that's going to be, that's about 4,000 or 5,000 of the requests. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of thoughtful ideas to try to bring wider audiences into the library. And it also is as a way to, and we're going to find another one, digitizing is another big thing with people in Town Hall trying to get things out of paper into, into scannable and searchable databases. So I just, just wanted to add that.
Right now, we have, based on the last fiscal year's state report, about 29% of Burlington residents have a card, have a library card. We've been working on growing that number. My goal for the next fiscal year report that I submit to the state is 50%, which is high, it's a really high change. But I think if we start offering things that aren't necessarily associated with just books, which is what people tend to think of when they think of a library, and hey, you up for yoga, get a library card. You want to learn how to knit, get a library card and these resources become available to you. It gives us, we appear to be more diverse than, you know, what people think of us. And I think our offerings could grow and then make people want to actually utilize the resources that we have.
Once you digitize, what's the security on that? In other words, you scan and you go through all this, these man-hours to do all this. What kind of, what preserves those digital files? How is that handled?
So we would scan everything to our server that we have and our server is managed by Novus and it also has a cloud storage for added protection and security. So it would really be a matter of getting everything onto our files. And from there, we could create an album and spotlight, you know, Tavern Day throughout the years. Or like right now, we have a yearbook display going on and you wouldn't have to necessarily put every single document and photo online available, but we could have a catalog and people could see what's there. And it would also make it easier for people to request things. Like we've had people that wanted to give an old map to somebody for a gift and they would come in and scan it. But people won't even know you could do things like that. That would be mostly handled on servers.
Can this be tagged into the Action Rec program that's coming?
I'd love to coordinate with Trish, I'm sure we could work something out.
You're going to have events and offerings, I would think, something that almost double utilize, you know, what, you know, you're looking to do also.
For sure, yeah.
Other questions for Jody? All right. You're up, Mary.
I know, same way.
Did I tell you about Nutmeg today?
No. Hi, I'm Mary Carrier. I work with the Building and Land Use Department and my ARPA request is to digitize all of our building files. Currently, every house or building in the town of Burlington is in a paper file folder. I'm so concerned about fire or water damage and I'm asking for funds to digitize all of our files. They will not be used like in the public viewing, they'd be just for FOIA requests. We would send them if they requested something, but we didn't want to like put everything out there. Our files go anywhere from five and a half by eight and a half to 24 by 36 inches. I mean, we got the maps, we got the small things, so it's going to be a very tedious process. I've been here for four years and I started doing scanning myself. It's like pulling a million staples, you know, you're taking up, you know, wrinkled, torn pieces of paper, you know. And I've got through about four shelves so far, but that's also, we, we installed two software programs in my four years for permit software. So you know, all my free time, I work on that, which isn't that much if you see the revenue that, you know, the building permits pull in. But we're really requesting 27,000 and our thoughts is we're going to get everything scanned, both building and land use files. Land use are like all the big special permits and everything with all the really big subdivision maps and everything. And once we have everything complete, we want to, the Building and Land Use Department will keep adding to all our folders. So everything will be maintained.
So if somebody wanted a record of something, say somebody's redoing their property or something and they, they want, you know, the documents that are on record for that, that would be FOI-able? And they would be able to download it from, from this particular?
No, I would email it to them.
You would email, email them together? So you'd have, you'd have control to keep all that information?
Yes.
Sort of, you know, within your, within your hands?
Kind of like we do now, but now what I do is I have to go to the file, I got to scan it in, then I got to email it to them. And so it's going to save some steps and it's going to keep our papers secure, you know. Right now, we have, if we lose our files, there's nothing there.
Now, is this, where's this, is this going to be stored on the cloud also?
It's going to be stored in Office 365, what we're using now, it's, it's backed up and everything on the server.
But is that, is that again backed up on the cloud off-site?
Yes, I believe it is, yeah.
It's got, I mean, because if it's just on a.
Hard drive.
On a hard drive.
Oh, no, no.
It's backed up because, I don't know if you remember when our IT guy came in and just, we bought all those subscriptions. 365, they explained how, I think it's called higher, I don't know, it back, there's a backup.
I'm a mom, so it's coming and shreds things, so I don't know.
Yeah, but they also.
Maybe I've got the name, but no, it is backup.
Okay, and as long, as long as there is a secondary offsite backup, just in case something else. And this, and this system would integrate with that, then you know, that's.
Yeah, because all these files, they contain like the plot plans, the as-built, certificate of occupancy, zoning. I mean, it has the septic well and sewer locations. I mean, these files are very pertinent to our residents and that's why we really want to get them digitized.
And they'll be searchable?
Um, not really searchable because we're going to be emailing them out as.
No, I mean searchable for you.
Oh, yes, for us, oh, yes.
Easier to go through than go through the files you have on those walls.
Yes, all I had to do is sit at my desk and click the street name and I'll be, I'll set. Would they, would those, can't just be billable, Mary? You know how you go and you get a copy in that town and you have to pay for it? No, I, they will not be because during COVID, when we emailed people, we did not charge them for paper. So if it's emailed, no. Okay.
So going forward, you're going to maintain things electronically now?
Yes, as soon as we get everything digitized, they said it's going to take probably 30 days to do it, which other companies said six to eight months. So we're probably going to go with this one vendor. So, um, we're probably going to go with this one vendor that can, you know, get it really fast because our files have to leave the office. And this is getting to be the busy time, so we probably won't start until maybe the fall, seeing how permits go because they're starting to pick up now. So.
But you're not using paper now, right? You are using paper.
All paper.
So after you're done with the paper, do you scan it?
Um, all our files, we have every house in the town of Burlington has a paper folder in my office.
What I mean is if tomorrow I come in with the permit application.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that going to have a paper trail or is that going to be stored electronic?
It's electronic now.
Okay.
We have our two, we have, uh, iWorks now for our permit software.
Okay.
So everyone can file it online or some people like to come in and just like sit at the counter and type things into it. So.
Sure they.
We're all on it.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. And the last one on the, um, ARPA request for three twenty-eight, twenty-three is the American Disabilities Act compliance engineering. That we approved last, um, meeting. We talked about ARPA, but we didn't officially, um, put it on the ARPA list. Uh, I did talk with Board of Finance. Our Board of Finance has approved it with Board of Selectment approval. So, um, that we just wanted to, uh, we felt that that was a, um, another good thing to move forward with. It's not in our budget, but it, it is something we, we should be, um, we're moving forward. It's just a funding mechanism.
This is where we look at all the municipal facilities for access.
And this goes into, can be with the ARPA funds. I know a lot of times, anything we do as far as engineering, we have to take out of our own pocket?
Yeah, but it's, um, if that, if, if it's for a grant, in other words, if it's for a grant, we're not using ARPA funds. But this is a, um, an assessment that might come, we might need grants later. We, we won't, we won't apply ARPA funds towards grant items. This is more of a, uh, assessment that we need to do. Um, and, uh, we may, we may look for grants after this, but that'll be non-ARPA funds most likely.
But that wouldn't create a problem with that at all?
No.
Okay.
So we have a grand total of, um, these requests of a hundred and seven thousand, three ninety-two. You can see below our total ARPA and there is a typo though. It's not APRA, it's ARPA. Uh, was two million, eight seventy-one, nine oh four. We, we have had some interest on that. So we, we, again, everything's a work in process, but that's, uh, we've got a little more funds without available. We've got seven hundred and eighty-one thousand committed to date. Uh, so seven eighty-two rounded. So this is a request for a hundred and seven, three ninety-two.
So we're up to a little over almost nine hundred thousand?
Yep.
So we have about a third of it allocated at this point, rough terms.
Rough.
I'll move to approve the ARPA requests listed on the three twenty-eight, twenty-three ARPA request sheet. For a grand total of a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two thousand.
All right, second?
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. You can stay for the budget if you want. All right, moving on to agenda item number six, uh, selectmen's report. Um, other than budgets, um, I think, uh, we, uh, there's not a lot to discuss, but, um, Scott does have results of his mini excavator. Um, I think he gave everyone a, uh, he's actually got a good opportunity. So let's, let's hear him out.
One of that on the budget or one of that?
I think we'll do that now. Yeah.
Scott Tyrell, correct Republic Works, um, September thirteenth, I was here to ask you guys if I could go out to bid for the mini excavator. Um, worked on it through the winter. I got three bids, uh, from three different companies, which you guys have in front of you. Um, and keep them working on it. Driving to Torrington, I found, uh, a used one, uh, with twenty-five hours, uh, MH, uh, equipment in Torrington. Uh, it's two thousand twenty-one with twenty-five hours on it with a three-year warranty, which is transferable. Called the company so we can get it and that one is for seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred. And I'm hoping to get approval from you guys to go on to the Board of Finance, uh, purchase this, uh, piece of equipment.
That's not, that's, um, you have the item listed, um, on your, um, capital plan, except you don't have a figure on that.
Right, because I was trying to take that out of the capital equipment account that was set up in two thousand twelve after the ice storm. The money that was left over from the ice storm from FEMA.
So you're sure, you're looking for us to approve this, take out your capital fund?
Correct. Because I believe, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I believe there's just under, just around ninety thousand left from that storm.
And if you remember, we're jumping ahead to, um, I, I revise or we revise the degradation list for Public Works to put that in. Um, so I don't know if you want to jump to that so that, that we can understand where that is.
On the top, it's, on the top of your list, it has a new mini excavator and then on the bottom, it has a mini excavator.
Oh, I got it in twice.
So you have.
Yeah, there you go.
The first one does, the first one doesn't have a cost assigned to it and it says, it's in bold. That's what I was looking at.
Okay.
And then just going down to the bottom, as you mentioned, and I see we have the.
Okay, so it is on the bottom. Yeah, I, I should have put it up top. It's only on there once.
The numbers.
The numbers, yeah.
I was just thinking, you were, Scott was trying to get two of them, just.
That's a, that's a rare find.
There you go. I, I was driving by to go to ONG or something to check on something and I'm like, when I saw a for sale sign, I'm like, I'm going to win there. So, and then I, I, the, it, it's basically dairy equipment. The cost that I got there, I called my salesman today. I said, look, I'm not trying to take a sale off money easily, but he actually sold that to a homeowner and then this company bought it back. He goes, that machine today with all the options on it and the extra buckets, it's probably about ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So they sold it and then bought it back?
Uh, they sold it and this other company bought it from them.
Oh, okay.
And like I said, it's like brand new, but you can see the price difference. And that's the one that I thought would be most, um, efficient for the town. So. But I would have ended up going probably with the Takahuchi.
How big is it and what is it?
Thirteen, it's, uh, thirteen thousand, uh, uh, gross vehicle weight. So it's a mini excavator. So it's, it's not small, small, but it's in between.
And I think if you remember, Scott was explaining that it's, it's. Can you repeat that, Cheryl?
No, I'm just asking, what kind of machine is it?
Yanmar.
Is it a John?
Yanmar. It's a Yanmar.
I'm sorry?
Yanmar.
Okay.
Y A N M A R.
And the mini excavator is, um, in deference to the, uh, loader that's you use at times, which is a trailer back and forth and.
This will be used for, the main purpose will be to catch bases, but it's also going to be used to get into smaller places that we can't get to. And I won't have to bring my combination backhoe out on the job. It'll be safer for the guys because there's a zero swing. When it swings, not with the outriggers out on the backhoe, it'll just be safer and more efficient. Because now you can swing around, go, you know, back and forth. So it'll save a lot of time. If we have a big tornado or a big ice storm, I can use it to, uh, feed the chipper because of the different functions on the machine. So it, it'll be used. Park and Rec will use it. There's a lot of different, uh, purposes for this machine. It'll probably be a fifteen to twenty-year machine. You know, because it's not like we're going to put a thousand hours a year on it. We'll put four or five hundred hours and, and, you know, it'll last.
There's so many use for detention pond?
Detention ponds, I, I, it just, there's multiple uses for it. And you can pull it with it one time. It's not like you gotta get a big, you know what I mean?
Right.
Get around. We gotta do water lines for any of the buildings, stuff like that. We don't have to get a big machine there. It just, it'll save a lot of man hours.
You're going to have to get an additional trailer for it?
No, I, I have trailers. I, I can move around.
You have a motion to approve?
Uh, making a motion to, um, recommend to the Board of Finance on, I'm saying.
So we have to have the sales taxes?
Nope.
No sales.
No, we don't pay, you open it. We want to round it up to eighty thousand just to.
Nope.
Okay.
I'm making a motion that we recommend to the Board of Finance, um, expenditure of seventy-nine thousand, five hundred for a mini excavator from M and H Equipment in Torrington, um, to come from the.
Capital.
Capital, capital equipment expense account.
Capital equipment fund, I think. It's on slash building. I, I don't have that sheet probably.
I think I might want to, I don't know if I have a second or anything to discuss it.
Yeah, second. I'll second that.
Yeah, I think the, the motion should be that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the purchase of, um, the mini excavator for seventy-nine, five. Recommendation to the Board of Finance to take it from the, um, hi- uh, highway equipment.
Yeah, highway.
I think it's called highway, isn't it?
Yeah.
Highway equipment.
Yep.
I will amend the motion.
To go with what? He just said.
Doug said.
Discussion?
I'll second the amendment.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That motion carries?
Thank you. My, my crew will appreciate that.
Yes.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, um. Other, uh, other selectmen's comments or under.
If I could ask Scott a quick question. When the bridge goes down on Main Street in Wigville?
Yep.
How long will that duration, the anticipated duration be?
I believe that's a six month and once we give them the start date, I will have a date on that because then they will have penalties not to make that. But I believe it's six months. I bet the end of the year that should be paid and done. And the boxes have already been during the process of being built, not like COVID where we had to wait on that. That's all being done now. And he goes, like I said, tomorrow, they're going to do some test pits. And then we're going to start to get a schedule together. I sent the Doug today. You know, they gotta, uh, with the, move the water line. That's the first thing they have to do is relocate that water line and then they can go work on the bridge.
That's, that's a good topic actually, because, uh, we have had some citizens that have brought up some concerns about that. Um, Scott's going to be getting some more signs, signage for up there. We're also going to see if we can get some flashing light, lights and stuff like that to give people, um, indication. We've also asked the police tomorrow, they're going to be down for a day. The police are going to have a presence out there and invest them to spend some time over it, um, Sessions Woods. So that people coming up, um, you know, they see the police there, the presence, so that they're slowing down. Because there will be people pulling out of Reservoir Road, um, that typically don't. So, uh, we're going to, you know, combine it with, uh, a little more police, police presence up there, um, to, to slow traffic down. And, uh, Scott's going to work on getting some signage for when the.
They should be here tomorrow, actually.
Okay.
So I'll get those up by the end of the week and when it's permanently proposed, basically what those signs will say is, uh, uh, be aware of, uh, traffic entering. So I'll put them on the detour signs that are already there so people know, uh, and hopefully that'll, you know, and, you know, increase the awareness of, uh, for the oncoming traffic, people calling out. Because not typically, Jimmy, you've lived there. How many times have you taken a left out of there in your life?
I can count on one.
Exactly. Myself too, so I, but I went up there today and I did a couple of tests. It's, sightline's pretty good. The biggest thing that Doug's going to do is get the police there. If they're going thirty-five, it's fine. People got to go thirty-five.
Yeah, and the, uh, they said they're going to cut the power for the day. Eversource gave a call to.
Oh, that's because they're transferring the lines from that pole to the other pole.
Okay.
So they can do the shutting. That's, 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 they had to move one pole.
Okay.
Other selectmen's comments?
Yeah, um, I had a, uh, conversation. I ran into Dwight, um, the other day and he was driving around in his little machine. And, uh, he had mentioned to me, um, that he's redoing his fence on his side of the, of, uh, Rock Road. He's also looking to extend it down on Charlie's Way. I don't know how far he's going to, he had meant that he's going to do that. And he had said, you know, you know, I'm doing this, you know, what's happening with the fence I'm being? And the fence on the other side is falling apart more and more.
Yep.
So we really do need to get that redone. I mean, the sooner the better because we don't want to keep letting it deteriorate more and more as it's going. So I think that's something that we need to, uh, address here, um, and get that, get that particular project moving forward. Uh, the other thing, Johnny Kick, what is going on with the field? Have we made any arrangements or got anything for as far as getting the field developed, engineered? Um, what's the status of, of that? Uh, I had, you know, people have questioned that. I'm not sure where we're at as far as that. I know we, we've tentatively approved where the location of it is, but we haven't, have we done anything to further the development of that, that is particularly?
Well, first the fence, um, yeah, Dwight talked to us about that as well and I'll, I'll work with Scott, you know, to, to, um, and especially for neighbor Dwight, if he's going to be doing that on one side, it might make sense to, uh, address the fence on, uh, on our side. But, uh, and as far as Johnny Kick, yes, you know, we've got feelers out. I went and visited a field, um, on Monday, um, in, in Watertown that has a similar contour to what we have over there where they had concrete, um, retaining wall slash seating. So, um, where we've got, uh, a few vendors lined up to, uh, to give us some, some proposals. So that, that's being worked on.
Do we have any idea when you're going to be getting any proposals back on that?
I don't have it.
I mean, I don't have it.
It, it won't be that long.
I just want to say, um, I'm excited for the first meeting of the website committee tomorrow. So, and I will bring up, uh, the website Tricia was talking about.
Oh, you might want to bring up the one also with the library because of, you know, from what they're doing also, I think all those three things should be integrated.
Yep.
So anybody trying to find it, because I, I know people always question which is why you're doing what you're doing with, with the town website. You know, it's difficult to, um, access, find information.
I mean, it might be helpful if there's this dichotomy where it's like, you know, you know, restaurants, recreation, things to do is on that website. And then town government is on this other website. Might make things easier, less for the town website they have.
All right, moving on to, uh, agenda item number, I don't know what's.
Seven.
Seven. Project update that everybody's waiting for. Not a lot here. I think, uh, I wanted to, um, provide, um, the latest update to the degradation lists. Um, and hopefully a little bit, um, again, this is, again, another work in process, but is, uh, let's go in order. Um, seven A is just giving us all the, uh, reserve accounts that we have, a rehash of that. And then, um, seven B is a volunteer fire department degradation list, um, including, uh, all the, the projects that, uh, that we discussed in the joint Board of Finance meeting. I've run it a couple ways, but I've only shown you one here. What this seven B shows that we only have the ARPA funds for the ambulance. It's already been approved. All right, so with everything on there, the wish list that's on the, uh, volunteer fire department, you can see that the, um, reserve at the end of twenty twenty-three would be roughly five hundred and thirty-five thousand. In twenty twenty-four, it goes negative and then we have a hole there. Um, so this is, this is just a informational piece for the board to say, okay, if, if we are going to look at an ARPA fund, um, we could pull something out of here, use ARPA, fill that hole. We could defer something. It's, it's a discussion piece to say, you know, what, what do we do with this degradation list? Um, and, uh, I don't know that we have to have an answer tonight because you're just looking at it, uh, for the second time, but, um, in, in a cleaner version.
Where's the, where's the other fire truck on?
That's what I was wondering.
I don't see, I don't see the fire truck. We talked about the, uh, last week or before. I, I don't see that here as a one thing. We're talking about that's forty months.
Yes, it, it's the, um, engine four, um, five hundred eighty-five thousand. And this, this is saying, you know, and, uh, and, and twenty twenty-five for the other hundred ninety-five. So that's the one they're looking through.
And that wasn't.
That I took that, if, if we do it with ARPA, you know, this is just to say, you know, nothing's decided.
Right.
You know, no, there's been no ARPA, you know, um, and I think we need to get information from the fire department too to say which is going to be the easier ARPA one, you know? I mean, if, if, um, uh, if we do the fire truck, we might be able to go out the bid, get a firm number and most importantly, spend the money by the time we need to, which is the end of twenty twenty-six. If we go with the, um, the fire upgrade to the, um, station, you know, which one's going to be, um, the one that's easier to, um, get a commitment and, and use for ARPA funds if we're going to use it for any. So again, it's, it's a conversation piece to say, um, you know, this is about what we've been putting into reserves for this area. Um, so that, that showing that we could increase the, um, the amount to put into the. the, the amount to put into the reserve, which I wouldn't recommend. I mean, we have, we have ARPA funds available and so on, so, or, or we defer things, or we say we, we're not going to do something. So this is.
It looks like on here, if we don't increase our, our reserves, I mean, we're going to be negative for quite a while if, if we're looking to do, you know, these particular items that are on here.
Correct.
I guess we should really take a hard look at the ARPA funds.
Yep.
And use those, I mean, for these large capital expenses. It's a one-time shot, you know, at this particular point.
And it also, as Mike said, the fire trucks are getting, everybody's got ARPA money right now, so that's part of the problem is that they're, they're buying these things and they're pushing out the delivery dates. So, you know, getting in the queue, you know, we have the ARPA funds, let's get it in the queue so that we can.
Get it at today's price.
Get it at today's prices, yes.
Yes, and.
And get it within four years.
And steel costs are going up. They're going approximately six percent for raw steel products here in the next couple of weeks, so you can imagine how much steel is in a fire truck. And so those costs are not going to be going down.
And so I think, you know, maybe by the next meeting, we can have a firmer conversation about what, what we may want to do for some of the larger capital projects, ARPA requests. And if we go to seven C.
Can I ask a question about seven B before we go on?
Absolutely.
So it, it seems like the, the fire engine is, is what's causing the big hole, right? Because I look at twenty twenty-four, and we've got the, the Scott packs, the SCBA packs and the radios, but we've been, we've been putting money aside for those, right?
Correct, and that's, that's why, you know, it was, it was confusing the way it was presented before because it wasn't on a degradation list. We had a, like, so what this is, this is just, this is capital that they need to plan for over long periods of time. So the SCBA packs are good for like fifteen years. So we, we, we put them into this degradation list so that we have funds for them in the near term.
Yeah, but we were specifically saving it.
We were, that, that's part of the nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven oh two, that's, so it was in that figure. It was in that figure, yes.
Okay.
I think the only thing we didn't, we don't really have saving for is the capital upgrades. I don't think that was really something we were saving for.
No, you're right.
That, that has just occurred here, was about the last year, I think, where we started thinking about it, really.
And they started talking about that when ARPA funds came out, so.
Well, hey.
But, but it also, you know, it, it, there is a need, you know, Mike Boucher did show me, one of the doors, they had a call and they couldn't open the door, so they had to move.
Yeah, he spoke about that, but I thought he said that was only about ten, oh, it's a ten thousand, ten thousand dollars a door?
It, it's just, it's just that, the point is, there's things that are happening at the fire station that, that need to be addressed. This is, this is a door this time, you know, are there other things that are going to go bump?
I mean, like I said, since we have this money that was gifted to us, who minds will use it for something that's going to last, you know, last us a long time?
Yep.
Maybe this is something you can ask Mike.
Oh.
Should, should engine one still be on there? Because he was explaining it that they didn't have to replace that because it was extended with the, because they had the rescue nine combo.
Yep.
So, I mean, should they just take engine one off of this, or?
We, we could, and I think it's, I think it's, what, what do we want to see and how do we want to see it? I, I think that there, there may be items on here that he's considering as spare and that, you know, not, not need to be replaced, and so it might be in there for informational purposes. So I can.
Well, as long as it's still being used, I think it should still be listed at this particular point. I don't think it exists anymore.
You don't think it exists anymore?
Does engine one exist? Or is that, or is that the one that was given to you guys? But that was a tank.
That was a tank.
That was a tank.
That's gone, guys, Scott. Engine one, I think what should happen is you put an asterisk down by rescue nine combination. Maybe you have a little footnote that this replaced engine one, that combination truck, and then get engine one off the.
Okay.
Because that's seven hundred and eighty thousand just waiting, but it, when you go out to twenty thirty, it's not listed.
But so there's.
Twenty thirty's going to be a million dollars.
There's three engines we have, right? Two, three, and four.
Yeah.
I'll ask Mike for clarification on.
It says five is a spare, so.
I mean, it doesn't even, but it doesn't list anything.
No, it doesn't list anything, so it's almost that we're saying engine one, is that a spare now? Like five, or is it, or is it still inactive?
That's the question.
Yeah, inactive, a piece of equipment at this particular point.
Okay. Ready for seven C?
Seven.
Yep. Okay, seven C, this is the one that we cleaned up and, and put it on one degradation list. Again, a working process, so yeah, the mini excavators on top without the cost, and they have it down below. So we'll, we'll continue to clean these up, but more importantly, I think it just shows all the items that Public Works is looking to do, including the cold storage. And the cold storage, we did put out there with a three percent escalation, so you see that it's eight hundred and fifty roughly from twenty-four to twenty-five. The, the Public Works garage roof in twenty-eight, twenty-nine with a three percent escalation is close to six hundred thousand. Excuse me. And this again shows no ARPA requests for Public Works, and it shows that we do have a, we're okay until we need that roof at the end of twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
So, so I think it, it just demonstrates that, you know, we were, we were budgeting for the cold storage, we had roughly four hundred and fifty thousand the way we were showing it before. And, and again, I think trying to take individual items and say how we're going to accrue for them just kind of leaks confusion in different schedules. This kind of just puts everything out there and says, this is our seven, eight-year plan, and this is what we're going to need. So this, this schedule can also show you that if we, for example, if the cold storage is something we want to move forward with in twenty-four, twenty-five, we might be able to add, we, we have a few, you know, we might, might put five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand against that from ARPA. You know, what, what do we need to, to fill the hole and get that project moving? And I'm not suggesting that now, but I think that is a potential. And I think it's up to, you know, the board as to whether they feel that we should move forward that cold storage. We have been recruiting for it, and I know Scott is very eager to get it. And if, if we did give some indication that that would be the project, he could then get firmer quotes and all that. But I, I think that's the, that's the whole point of this exercise, to say, where, where do we want to start getting the big ARPA projects, and then we can start putting the diligence behind it.
Well, I think if, once Scott gets the numbers on that, current numbers for that, we should, you know, really start talking about it because at this particular point, things are not slowing down, they're actually increasing stuff. So I think in that particular case, for that type of stuff, the sooner the better.
So, so we're, we're saying that it, it looks like a strong ARPA candidate that he should find, he should start looking at some, getting some firmer costs.
Yeah, I would agree. Because we've got to fix the hole, and that's a good way to fix the hole.
Yep.
Because then we don't, we can keep our, our annual.
Well, we have two, we have the, the whole, the fire department, the whole in the, in Public Works, we've got to see how much we can plug with the little, with the little what we're going to have left, they're going to eat it up pretty, pretty quickly on this project.
And, and part of that, we do have to eat up because we do have to spend it by twenty twenty-six, so.
Yeah, no, I, we have to assign it this year, don't we?
We have to, by the end of twenty twenty-four, calendar year twenty twenty-four.
I thought it was twenty twenty-three initially.
Oh.
Is it twenty twenty-four?
The end of twenty twenty-four, it has to be allocated, end of twenty twenty-six to be spent.
It seems to, I thought it was twenty-three, twenty-five, or whatever.
ARPA's changed a hundred times.
Okay.
But it, it's been pretty stable. The only thing that I've heard about ARPA is the potential to extend the dates to spend the money, but that's not official yet. And I, I think we just go on the, you know, we're looking at our capital plan out several years, I think you can find.
I'm sure we can find places to spend it, I don't think that, that's a problem.
Yeah. But spend it wisely. I think those are the big items I had for the budget. I think we all know the school referendum is coming in. And beginning of May, they did drop, drop quite a bit. There, there, we, we're coming in at about a, just under a two percent increase on the school from, from the model four, so there's been some progress there. The degradation lists are the big ones, and I'm still working on, we're still working on the roads, and that's the next one I want to get to you where it's spread out in the timeframes for that as well. Any other questions on budget? Very done, we'll move on to item number eight, citizens' comments, the second round? Oh, I'm sorry, that's senior, just, okay, I'm sorry, thank you, David. Seven D, how could I miss that? Okay. As you may or may not be aware, senior housing has really been overlooked by the town. I think that Donna Mullin and Steve Savino have done a good job running the facilities, but the auditors had mentioned that there's a segregation and duty issue down there, and I, I know, I think they're a little off the mark there. It's not a segregation of duties, it's a small, small shop down there, you're going to have some, you're going to have some overlapping duties and so on. It's really an oversight issue. So we've changed some policies for senior housing. I am now currently signing all checks, so there's dual signatures on all expenditures. Darlene is reviewing the trial balance, she's also doing reconciliations. So we've addressed the control issues over the senior housing. And this is another step forward to say, here is the oversight. So this is the budget for the senior housing complex. And the senior housing complex is, is a little bit unique here in Burlington. Many housing complexes are owned by a housing authority or run by, through HUD. We are different. We are basically just landlords. We own these assets, they belong to the town, and they are utilized for lower-income senior housing. And the Boards of Finance and Board of Selectmen will now have budgets for this, and will be able to talk about the vision of where we want it, what it to do, where, where we want it to go. And the management of the housing authority, not a housing complex, it's not an authority, will be held accountable to the budget that they present. Once we approve it, once the Board of Finance approves it, and then once the town meeting approves it. So I wanted to get it to you, you know, we don't have to go through a lot of detail, I just got it to you. You can go through it and maybe discuss it at the next meeting. This is not in Edmonds right now, and we are working on bringing parks and, parks and rec into Edmonds, we're working on library into Edmonds, so we're also taking water push control authority out of Edmonds. So this is, Don, the accounting is done through Steve Savino, that's going to continue for now, that'll be evaluated sometime, but what we will do is put this into the budget that's presented to the town. So for the time being, the town will not be doing the accounting, it will still be done externally, that's why you see the eleven thousand dollar accounting bill. But when, at some point, we may take this in, into Edmonds, but we've kind of got our plates full right now. But the first step is to get a budget in front of the Board of Selectmen, they can review it. And the, the big thing is that the, the town is being repaid the sixty-five thousand that we are spending on the mortgage, if you will, that, that was on that property. We've got a few years left of that, and then at some point, we have to determine what happens to the excess. You know, the, the senior housing, the intent is to make it affordable to residents, but there is still a little bit of overflow, and where, where does that money go once the bonds are finished being paid off? Do we plow it back into lower rents, or do we try to provide amenities to seniors? That's a conversation left to have in a couple of years.
Well, there was a discussion a couple of years ago about making more units there. And that seems to just sort of fall by the wayside.
It's, I'm not a fan, and neither are the, the people there of, of making more government-run affordable housing. I think some of the things we're looking at is finding some land, and Larry's taking a look at this, to have private developers come in and develop some senior housing that would be affordable. We could also tie it into, I believe, CHAF mortgages so that they would qualify for the state as affordable housing. So the, the issue is, is if the government runs senior housing, no property taxes are paid, so it is in effect a subsidized house to people. So even, even though they might be paying their bills, they're not paying any property tax up there, so the town is subsidizing that housing to a degree. If we have private developers coming in and make housing that is affordable according to the state guidelines, and we could either, either have it rented by private developers and, or purchased through homeowners. And I just spoke with a woman from HRA New Britain that is very excited about maybe helping us get residents onto some of these mortgage programs that, that expand the pool to the people of, of more modest needs, so.
Yeah, but if we're, but as, as you had stated previously, if we're going to end up here shortly with an excess that's going to be generated from this, I guess that excess money, you know, if, if, it's either improvements and/or, you know, does that, like you said, where does that go back to? Can, can we do more with that? So, so taxpayers aren't subsidizing that because we're going to get, you know, we're going to be getting a, lack of a better term, profit from it as far as the town goes. So that either goes back to our general fund or for something else to use to, I guess, either upgrade that or add additional stuff, and as long as we can figure that we're going to always eventually get an excess from it. It might not be a, a bad thing to look at.
Absolutely, and, and I think right now, the first step is just give visibility to it, make sure that we understand it, and then we'll have a few years to determine what happens with the ones, once the bond's paid off, which will be in about two or three years. So, and that's it for budget from this. I mean, if there's any questions, I'll take them, but I think the first thing I just wanted to do is digest it because it's the first time you've seen it.
Do you know how many units there are?
Twenty-four.
Now, when, as far as that complex, it's because the town owns the property. If we developed anything on there, it would have to be a subsidized type of situation. Couldn't be any private development on that property?
We might be able to do private development, yeah. I mean, it's, there, there's no, I don't think there's any reason we, this because we own it, doesn't, doesn't mean we have to continue the path that we've done it with now.
Well, possibly we could lease the property to somebody on a, like a ninety-nine year lease for them to do the development of. So, I mean, again, we.
Farming program, they have quite a few lots, and the people own the house, but they rent the property, so they lease the property to follow.
So, I mean, if, if we did something along those lines, we would then again be generating income. I know we might not be getting a lot of, well, in that case, you'd have to explain that. But we'd also be getting, you know, income off of, off of the land lease.
We never really got an update about the backlog or, you know, interest in.
At one time, there was, it was stated, there were quite a few.
I don't know where that, that sits.
When they were pushing for adding, adding units there, two or three years ago, I don't remember exactly the date, but that was part of the push because there was a excess, you know, a lot of people that were looking to get into that facility, so.
Yeah, there's, there's many options we can go with, I think that's kind of beyond the scope of just the budget for now, but I think in general, there's not a desire by anyone that's involved in the town to have more town-run senior housing. I think there's more of a concern about what's going to happen if the people that are doing the current housing now retire or step down, and very, they're all close, very close to retirement, so.
Right.
And I don't know that there's a desire to expand a government, Burlington government-run senior housing, I think their preference is private development. But first thing is to understand what we do have and make sure there's visibility and make sure that the boards and the town folk can vote on the expenditures appropriately. Thank you. Talk about overlook. Okay, moving on to item number eight, citizens' comments. I'll go through the rules if anybody raises their hand. And seeing none, I think we'll move on to item number nine, adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is, meeting is adjourned at eight eleven P M. Take care. Take care.